Hello, good evening, everyone. It is June 13th, and I am calling this meeting to order. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And taking attendance, item three, all councilors who are here, except Councilor Danahe, who will not be joining us today. Item four, public engagement. Sherry, have you heard from anyone? No, you haven't heard from anyone?
Well, I haven't heard from anybody, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. And there is no one in the audience for a public comment, so we will move on to item five, approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the May 9th Town Council regular meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second, great. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, six, zero, Sherry. Item B, approval of the June 6th, 2022 Town Council meeting minutes.
Move to accept meetings, minutes for June 6th.
Second. Great. Any discussion? And all in favor? Aye. All six, Sherry, thank you. Let's see, we're just, we might change the order around a little bit. Are the Nahand Street presenters on Zoom, Sherry? They're here?
Madam Chair, Brian Fox is there. He's in the, you can't see him.
Then let's, yeah, let's, we're gonna go around on the agenda to get some of our guests in first. So we are going to move to item 7A, the Fourth of July Parade or Parada. And we have someone joining us.
I represent the Parada.
I love it, I love it. Thanks, Brian. Please introduce yourself and tell us your address, and then tell us all about this year's parade.
Sure, Brian Fox, 61 Elm Streets. I'm here to ask for approval for the 75th Wakefield Fourth of July Parade. We're back after two years off. It's gonna be a big one this year. I put together a brief, very brief history of the parade for those who aren't familiar with our history. So this will be our 100th anniversary, the First Wakefield Fourth of July Parade and the 75th Parade, they're gonna coincide this year. That's what we planned on, but that's, you know, how things worked out. The first parade was done by the precursor of the Chamber of Commerce to bring people to town in 1922. In 1930, they didn't do another parade, sorry, they didn't do another parade until 1930, when they did one for Wakefield's 300th anniversary. The West Side Social Club started doing the parade in 1933. It became an annual tradition in 1948, and then from '48 onward, we somehow became the biggest Fourth of July parade in the state. Life Magazine came out to cover it. The 1948 was described as being a monster parade due to its size. The 1952 parade, the Boston Post wrote that "All roads lead to Wakefield on the Fourth of July." So somehow our little town became known for the Fourth of July, and that's a tradition we're keeping to this day with our 75th Parade.
Great, thank you so much. So any questions from anyone? Jonathan?
Right, first of all, can you remind me, how many bands do we have booked this year?
I had one canceled today, we're down to 27 bands.
Twenty-seven bands, though.
Twenty-seven bands coming from across North America.
So I just, I just wanted to say before we formally give the approval, I don't think anyone in Wakefield isn't hugely excited to have the parade back. And just given, you know, what you were telling me on Saturday at the festival, it sounds like it's just, it is gonna be another monster parade this year, so thank you to you.
Definitely gonna be a monster parade.
Thank you to you and the committee and all the volunteers for all the great work that you do. I mean, this is, it's so exciting to have this back, and it just feels like some semblance of life is getting back to normal in Wakefield now that we've got the parade this year. So thank you.
Thank you.
Ed?
Just applaud for two things. One, Brian, I know you guys are still looking for volunteers for day of.
Yes, we have 23 so far, so we're a little under where we need to be. I had to turn down a lot of our performers coming, they needed 40 volunteers for just them for this, and I said, well, I've got 22 for everything else, so I can't give you 40 people. So it's, you know, it's the annual struggle, every nonprofit in town has this issue, so working through it.
Having been back in the staging area, I was saying, I mean, it's quite an operation day of, I mean, you guys do it very well, but, you know, more hands, the better, so anyone who's interested and available. The other piece is, I know you guys are always fundraising too. Do you wanna give a plug for the website?
Sure, if you go to www.julyparade.org, there's a yellow donate button, you can donate through PayPal, or our PO Box is WIDC, PO Box 1746 in Wakefield.
Best of luck with it, looking forward to it. And there's a big surprise too, I know that we.
There's a big surprise coming.
None of us know yet, but.
A big surprise coming, I'm most excited for this, because it took me two years to get, but here we come.
Any other questions? Brian, to follow up on Councilor Dembrowski, can you talk a little bit, as people who have volunteered in the past, some of the volunteer opportunities that you are looking for help with?
If you're referring to one of your favorite things, it's driving a golf cart.
It is on the streets of Wakefield, beyond my favorite activity, yes.
One of the, one of the things that a lot of people get an opportunity to do for the first time ever, for some, is learn to drive a golf cart, and get to do a few practice runs around the parking lot before it gets busy, and that's a big hit every year. That's what Sherry personally is describing, yep. Other things include the parking lot, with 28 bands coming of various sizes, we have the entire Aleppo Shriners coming, and they're gonna have at least three big rigs, and all that gets parked at two, you know, parking lots, so people to be there to make sure vehicles are lined up. One of our performers is getting a police escort to the POPS immediately following their performance in our parade. They still wanna do Wakefield, and the bus is going to meet them from the POPS. They'll get on the bus, the police escort straight to Boston after they finish. So the ability to have that stuff lined up properly, to get everyone out where they need to be, is really important. And of course staging all the 86 individual and groups we have that are gonna be coming.
And do you need the students to carry the banners?
We definitely need kids to carry banners. We collect money from businesses every year, and as a fun job for kids, they get a T-shirt and $25 to carry the sponsor signs, as well as the pooper scoopers. And I went all out getting horse groups this year, so those kids are gonna be, a lot of demand for that job. Probably kinda busy.
And there's premium pay for the pooper scoopers.
Forty dollars a kid, plus a T-shirt for that, and sometimes they get tips from the crowd selling.
Send out your family, make a little money.
I've heard from some adults that wanna do the pooper scooper to get the $40, as well as I let you know.
That's great.
I'm saying, Madam Chair, maybe Mr. Fox can remind the public of the time that the parade starts and the route, just so.
It's gonna start at 5:00 PM on the Fourth at the Lakeside Office Park, I wanna say 591 North Ave, somewhere around there. It's gonna wind its way down North Ave, head down Church Street onto Commons Street, then onto Main Street, ending about two miles later at the Gallow Middle School.
And July 4th, I had to look it up, it is a Monday.
It is a Monday this year.
Long weekend for all.
Which could be a very, very big Fourth of July in Wakefield, because people would be coming home from wherever they were, possibly, and we could end up with one of the biggest crowds ever because of that. Lot of excitement, so we'll find out.
That's great. And Steve, do you wanna talk a little bit about what your team does to prepare for this?
Well, we've had a number of meetings, we actually have one tomorrow at 6 o'clock to go over safety issues, police, fire, DPW, making sure the parade route is safe, all the activities are safe, and that the participants and the crowds are safe. So it's a long day, we don't allow any police officer to take the day off, normally firefighters, so it is a, we are happy when that last car leaves Wakefield after the fireworks around 11 o'clock, there is a sigh of relief. But it's a great day, and we look forward to it, so thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you. And there's nowhere else you can spend, we have activities in town between the West Side Children's Events, from 7:00 AM to about noon. You can go home and have lunch, and when you come back, it's time for the parade at 5:00, and then they have their concert and fireworks afterwards, so you can spend your entire day in town. No other town near here does anything like Wakefield does.
And I will caution, just because the Town Council approves the parade tonight, does not approve seats going out along the route tomorrow morning, so let's temper that a little bit. Perhaps, you know, the weekend would be a good time.
This weekend?
Before.
No, wait till July, wait till July is the recommendation.
Maybe nothing but 14th, 30th is what you're suggesting.
Yeah, I think those are good reminders, do not block sidewalks, do not block driveways. July, July seems like a good time to start celebrating July 4th. And thank you, Brian, for mentioning it, it is really a collaboration between various nonprofits and groups in town, and so the morning bike ride competition, and there's some other, like a bike parade.
The dog carriage parade, the bike parade, fishing derby.
A fishing derby is all done by the West Side Social Club, who also are the ones who do the fireworks and the music at night.
Yeah, the concert at night, yep.
It really is, you know, dedicated volunteers throughout town in partnership with public safety and others make our town shine on that date. So thank you to everyone that does that.
May I just say one thing to Brian? I just wanted to share with you that the three years that I was stationed in London A1, we would have a Fourth of July celebration on the base, and we would invite our British neighbors to come to the celebration. And it was always interesting when they asked, well, what's this celebration all about? It was expressing our independence from you, and now we're stationed here in your country. But they came for the hot dogs and the hamburgers, and it was actually a really good time, and then it would culminate in a soccer match or football match between the Americans and the Brits.
If you wanna lead one this year, I mean, you can, you can find a spot for you.
That's great. Okay, so if there's no more discussion, then do I have a motion?
Yes, move to grant permission to the Wakefield Independence and State Committee to operate the Fourth of July Parade on July 4th, and to close any streets as needed.
Second. Great, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Great, Sherry, unanimous. Thank you so much, Brian, good luck to you.
See you out there.
Yeah. You're wearing an older shirt, not one of the newer shirts.
The newer shirts are in storage at the moment.
Okay, okay.
I need to collect some, because I have some online orders I need to ship out tonight. That's my next stop.
They're all great shirts, so thank you for coming in.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, so I think, let's, let's do a couple more of these license and policies events while we're on this section. Item 7B, a request from Catherine McDonald for an entertainment license for Plaza Jazz at the Lucius Bee Memorial Library from 6:00 until 8:00 PM on Thursdays from June 20, from June to September. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, great. And any discussion? Steve, anything you wanna tell us?
No, I think it's a, it's a great event, you know, grab a takeout from any of the local restaurants and enjoy the music, and they really are fabulous, a lot of them are from the Berklee School in Boston, and it really is a great, great night out, and I know I enjoy it, I've gone a number of times, and so it's, it's a wonderful event, and I'm glad it's back.
Great. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye, great. Item 7C, request from Eric Perez Ruiz for Common Foods.
The tour.
Thank you, license for Ela's Mini Market located at 12 Vernon Street.
So moved.
Second. Great, and any discussion, starting with Sherry, they've gotten in all their paperwork?
We have, and it's working its way through the portal, so we're in good shape, yep.
Great. Any other, Councilor Dembrowski?
Is this changing hands, or?
Yeah, it's a brand new business.
So it's a brand?
Brand new owner, running the business, not that building, but the business.
Okay, so the same business, just different ownership?
Yep, same type of business, kind of convenience store with a couple of seats for sandwiches and what have you.
Perfect, thanks.
Great. So had a motion and seconded all in favor? Aye, great, that was everyone, Sherry. And then item 7D, extend the date to December 10th, 2022, on the licenses for house, beer, brewing, and Aaronoff Cellars to include the winter markets.
So moved.
Second. Great, any discussion? And this, just a point of clarification, Steve, this was, we just didn't have the right time dates.
Correct, the licenses that were, the applications didn't have the right, did not have the correct dates on it, probably because there was some, maybe some flux between them and the farmers' market, so we need to make sure that they match.
Great. Okay, so any other discussion on that? All in favor? Aye, great. Okay, I think 7E is gonna be a little bit more of a discussion, I don't see the third party of your group yet here, so I think we're gonna go back to item 6, the presentation, if that's okay. And they are joining us via Zoom.
Yep, I'm bringing them over now. Okay, they should all be there.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening, we can't see you yet, we only see Sherry.
Yeah, I tried to put my video on, but it's saying that the host is not allowed.
We'll fix it on this end.
I'm getting a message that says you cannot start your video because the host has stopped it. Same here.
WCAT, can you check that out?
They're working on it, just give it a minute. Thank you. It's kind of like, what do you call those, when somebody's talking, the dolls? Ventriloquist, it looks like Sherry, you can just move your mouth and we hear them, we just don't see them. Ah, here we go, one person. Yes, we've got everyone, thank you. Thank you, WCAT, for figuring that out. Hello, everyone, if you could introduce yourselves and do the presentation, that would be great.
Excellent, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, my name is Paul Haverde, I'm the attorney of Latin Dembrowski, Haverde and Silberski, I'm of Compton, Massachusetts. I'm here tonight on behalf of my client, 32 Nahand Street LLC, regarding its proposal for a 24-unit rental development, proposed pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 40B, Sections 20 to 23, on property located at 32 Nahand Street, Wakefield, Massachusetts. With me tonight is the Principal of 32 Nahand Street LLC, Scott Green, the Project Engineer, Chris Barages of Williams &amp; Barages, and the Project's Chapter 40B Consultant, Kristen Costa of LA Associates. Before I introduce Mr. Barages to go over the site plan, I thought it would be helpful to provide an overview of the Chapter 40B permitting process, and so we are, this meeting fits into that. So Chapter 40B is a state statute that allows a developer to obtain a single comprehensive permit that subsumes all other local permitting requirements. The entity that issues the comprehensive permit is the Zoning Board of Appeals, and as part of the application process, the applicant may request waivers of local rules and requirements that are necessary for the construction of the project as proposed. However, prior to filing a comprehensive permit application with the Board of Appeals, the applicant is first required to obtain what's known as a project eligibility letter from a qualifying subsidizing agency. So there are four state and/or quasi-state agencies that issue project eligibility letters. There's the Department of Housing and Community Development, EEC, Mass Developments, Massachusetts Housing Partnership, and Mass Housing. The applicant is in the process of submitting an application to Mass Housing or a project eligibility letter. Mass Housing will contact the town for its comments during the project eligibility letter application process. So the purpose of this meeting tonight is to provide the council an overview of the proposal, so that it may make informed comments to Mass Housing during the applicable comment period. We're not looking for any specific feedback from the board at this time, but of course we're willing to take all comments into account, and we will seek to provide responses as this process. Once a project eligibility letter has been issued for the project, the next step in the process is the applicant to submit a comprehensive permit application to the Board of Appeals. The board will then have 30 days from the filing of this application to hold a duly noticed public hearing. Then the board has 180 days from the opening of the public hearing, their evidence, and then close the public hearing. From that point, the board has 40 days to deliberate and then render a decision. What has three options, once it renders its decision, it can either approve the project as proposed, it can approve the project with conditions, or it can deny the project. The applicant has the right to appeal either an approval with conditions or a denial to the Housing Appeals Committee. The standard of review of the board's decision will be whether such decision was consistent with local needs. More specifically, the HAC will determine whether there are any legitimate issues of local concern that outweigh the regional need for affordable housing. This is a very difficult standard for a board to meet, and you have done so successfully. So at this point, I would like to turn things over to Chris Barages, so that he can go over the site plans and provide a brief overview of the proposed architectural.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Madam Chairperson, for the record, my name is Chris Barages from the Engineering and Survey Office of Williams &amp; Barages, can everyone hear me okay?
Sounds good.
Okay, great. I'm gonna share my screen with your permission, just to show you where the project is located. Just wanted to start with a, with a quick overview. Here's an aerial slash political map of the town of Wakefield. You can see Route 128 to the top, north is straight up the screen here, Lake Quantapowit and Crystal Lake. And as we kinda zoom in on the center, close to the center of the town, we, we find Nahand Street, obviously, running from the high school out to the intersection of North Avenue. And if I zoom in to the intersection of Nahand Street and Main Street, just over to the east here, to the right, as one travels from the intersection of Main Street and Nahand Street, heading towards the high school, a few properties down on the left-hand side, you'll find number 32 and 32A Nahand Street. It's an existing two-family home, and it is found on the zoning map in the, excuse me, the general residence district. This lot that you see here is approximately, it's just under half an acre at 18,500 square feet. You can see the building on the west side of the property with the driveway, and then the yard area over to the right. I'm gonna just change screens here for a minute, I'm gonna bring you into our existing conditions plan, so that we can see a little bit more detail. But before I do that, I just wanted to let you know how close we are to various amenities from this property. It's only about 500 feet, it's a tenth, just under, over a tenth of a mile to the intersection here of Main Street and Nahand. There's our local MBTA bus line, Route 137, right in front of the Dunkin' Donuts here is the bus stop. That's the bus route that runs from Malden Center to the south, all the way up to Redding Depot. If you wanna walk just a little bit further from Nahand Street through the intersection, you can get over to the commuter rail at Wakefield Station, it's just a, just a half a mile walk down the road. So it's relatively convenient to several amenities. I think the, sorry about that, the, the Wakefield Dog Park is also just around the corner from the site on Main Street as well. So let me go over to our site plan set. And we submitted an eight-page site plan set, this is very similar to the plan that we were looking at, but black and white, it's our location plan, and we are in the center of the screen here, this property here, I'm gonna flip over to our next page. This is a copy of the town's assessor's map. Our property is shown down here, towards the bottom of the screen, again, the intersection of Main Street and Nahand Street. If I flip over to the next sheet, this is our existing conditions plan, and, let's see here. If I were to zoom in a little bit here into the property, you can see that our property is relatively square, we have existing frontage along Nahand Street, and you can see the two-family home situated in the north-south direction. All of our plans are oriented the same way, with north being up the plant. We also have an existing shed on the property, it's 20 feet long by 10 feet wide, and a concrete pad in front of the shed, and then various parts of the yard are enclosed in a fence, and this is mostly grass area. Just past the property to the north, we abut some town-owned land in the back here. Much of the, much of the property to the north here, in the town-owned land, is wetland. We've, we flagged the limit of that wetland, and the buffer zone to that wetland just comes on to our property in this northwest corner here, so that would be 100 feet from the wetland. We don't know just yet if we'll have to, if we'll need a filing with the Conservation Commission, at the very least, we'll probably submit an abbreviated notice of resource area delineation, to make sure that the Conservation Commission feels comfortable with the way we flag the wetland on the abutting property to the north. Let's see, the existing home is a, is a one-and-a-half-story building, and it's, it's rather old, existing two-family home, and we are again in the general residence district. In the proposed condition, I'm gonna flip a couple of pages to show you our color rendering plan that shows you what we'd like to do with the property. This is what we would like to do on the property. We are proposing a rectangular building that measures 60 feet wide by 114 feet deep. This, this building would be a four-to-four-and-a-half-story building with a lower level that's partially in the ground, it would be a lower garage level. You'll see what that looks like when I show you the architectural plans briefly at the end of my presentation. So the entrance to the property would remain essentially, essentially the same, where folks would come in to the property off of Nahand Street, and we, we would propose a parking field that is accessed by a 22-foot-wide driveway, so people would be able to go two-way traffic in and out, and then come to the back of the property and enter the parking garage under the building here. We are proposing, as I said, a four-to-four-and-a-half-story building that would allow us to have that lower garage level, that's half buried in the ground, and half of it would be exposed, and then on top of that garage level would be four living stories with six units on each floor, for a total of 24 units. This is, this would be a rental project, all of the units would count towards the town's affordable housing inventory as a rental project. In terms of the number of parking spaces that were proposed to support the 24 units, we typically seek to get at least, a minimum of parking ratio of one-and-a-half parking spaces per unit, and at 24 units, we have proposed approximately 40 parking spaces. The parking spaces include 21 spaces that would be underneath the building, and then on the surface, we're proposing 19 parking spaces. There are 16 along the west side, or the left side of the property here, and then three more in the back over here, so that would be a total of 40. So for a 24-unit building at one-and-a-half parking spaces to one ratio, the total number of parking spaces required. the total number of parking spaces required using that ratio would be 36 and we have four extra for a total of 40. And at that total number of parking spaces per the Americans with Disability Act in the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board, we provided two handicap accessible spaces in the garage level underneath the building here. We're also proposing to collect our trash and recycling in a dumpster area located in the back left corner of the property, the northwest corner at this location here. This would allow a trash vehicle to come in and turn here, come and pick up the trash and then, and then exit the property, the same, after having done that three-point turn. I mentioned that this property has relatively easy access to public transportation. Just 500 feet down the road is that bus stop for Bus Route 137. And we, obviously, we are within walking distance of the Galver Middle School downtown and also the Wakefield Dog Park. And as I mentioned before, just a half a mile walk to the Wakefield commuter rail station. From a lay of the land standpoint, if I back up one sheet, this is our topographic plan and these squiggly lines tell us sort of how the land is shaped, the ups and the downs, if you will. We find that the property is relatively flat. There are some portions of the property that, that slope out towards Nahon Street. And then, once you get about halfway back across the back of the building here, the land also slopes towards the back, towards the town property and eventually flowing out to the wetland that's about 100 feet away from the back of our property. What we are proposing to do, because we have a lower level and we're gonna bury half of it, we are coming into the property and then gently sloping downhill down into the property in order to be able to get down to a lower level in the back here. And that's gonna require us to have a retaining wall that'll hold up the earth in the back of the property here along the property line. Our property back here, the parking area, if you will, will be on the low side of the wall. The retaining wall would hold up the earth on the high side, which is on the outside of our property. And that wall would be anywhere from four to six feet high in order to accommodate what we envision for being able to get access to the inside of the building. We're also proposing to collect our stormwater that falls on the roof and in the parking lot. We are gonna be handling it using the guidance document and regulations that are set out by the Department of Environmental Protection, the DEP Stormwater Management Regulations. And following those regulations and the TEN standards will, will prove to the approving authority, the town engineer and the Conservation Commission that we're complying with DEP standards and protecting the interests of the Wetlands Protection Act. We haven't fully designed the system yet, but it'll be an underground system that'll collect the rooftop runoff and runoff from the paved surfaces. It'll collect it in a series of catch basins and then direct them to a little pretreatment device. And then we'll have a series of chambers that will be underneath the parking lot on the west side of the building here and in the back of the building here. These chambers will allow water to collect and they'll provide storage and then infiltration back into the ground. So our charge is to make sure that we're not increasing the rate of runoff that leaves the property when we compare what the existing property looks like today. From an architectural standpoint, we are working with PHB Architects out of Manchester, New Hampshire. We have presented in our packet two elevation drawings. This is what someone would see standing across the street from the property on the other side of Nahon Street, looking, looking straight into the frontage. This is the lower level that I described here. And for perspective, you can see this person, that's the stick figure that's standing in front of where our front door would be. It would be half a level exposed of the garage. And if you can see, we have some dotted lines down here. They represent the lower level. So this first level, half above the ground and half below the ground. And then you can see above the ground surface, one, two, three, four stories. And the second sheet shows you what the, what the building would look like if you were looking at it from the side. So if you were on an adjacent property, for example, to the west, direct, our direct, if there was another two-family home and this is what it would look like from, from that side. Again, a lower half level exposed at the ground and then one, two, three, four stories of living space, six units on each floor. In terms of the breakdown of the number of units, that's determined by the 40B guidance documents and by regulation. They are going to be a mix of one bedrooms, two bedrooms and a certain percentage of the units will also, are also required to be three-bedroom units. And so those will be mixed in the 24 units that we are proposing as part of our plan. Madam Chair, that's the end of my formal presentation, but our team is here to answer any questions that you or the town council have through you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And let's see if we can see all of you and not just me. Thank you for that presentation and let's open it up for discussion and then we've all, I'm sure, got some questions. So Counselor Chines?
Sure. Just one question and then I do have some maybe comments or feedback to share and hope this will be part of the feedback we share with Mass Housing as well. On the question side, could you share, just for the developer, Mr. Green, and any prior experience with projects in Wakefield or other 40B projects, either here in the community or in the immediate area?
So Chris Sporages here again. Paul, I'm not sure if Scott is on the screen. I don't see him here.
I'm not sure, Paul, if you're able to speak to that.
Yeah. WCIT, is there a way we can see all of them or did we lose them? I know they're probably, there we go. Thank you. Okay.
So I know that Mr. Green has done some development in Wakefield. I don't think to this scale, it'd be more to the family developments. And I do believe that he has experience with 40B as well. Kristen, have you had the opportunity to look into that?
Yeah, I think we, I actually had a resume from him. He and I worked on a project in Ipswich initially years ago. He ended up not being involved in the, in the actual construction. But I did collect a resume from him when I was, well, I'm still preparing the Mass Housing application. And he does mention condos in Wakefield, 747 Main Street, 858 Main Street, something in Middleton, Lincoln, Mass. Again, in Wakefield, a triplex of condos on Franklin Street, if these familiar to people, single-family homes on Linden. And then a number of projects in Lexington. As far as other developments, he had Erd Street Stonem, he's got a two-family, Smith Street Mitchell Ave in Medford. He's done a few projects in Medford, I believe. Belmont, Mass, Acton. So he's been basically in business 27 years. He's been involved in some 40Bs, not alone in, in, you know, followed through, through construction that I'm aware of. But he's certainly aware of the process, you know, the requirements and all that. And he and I have worked together for a number of years. I myself have been in affordable housing for, hmm, 25, maybe? Maybe closer to 30. So, and I've known Scott for, for quite a while. And he wasn't supposed to be here, so apologies. I'm not sure.
So we do have somebody on PG Utilities.
That's him.
Okay, I'll bring him over.
Okay.
We'll just give him a minute and then.
Yeah, he should be coming over now. I didn't have his name, so I had no idea who he was.
Oh.
He didn't wait. Well, except for Kristen, apparently, who reached.
Yeah. He's on. Scott, can you turn on your video?
There he is.
Sherry, can you hear us?
I can hear you guys.
Okay, great.
And yes, I have experience in regards to many projects. I also have Greenwood Plaza in Wakefield, too.
Did I miss one, Scott?
So can I, can I ask why this particular project and why sort of a development of this nature on that site? Just curious about, you know, other options that you, you looked at or just the relative value of thinking about a 24-unit development at that particular location?
Nice location for something like that, the lay of the land, the shape of the land. Close proximity to the center of town.
So I guess relative to, I guess just if you could sort of elaborate on how you got to 24 units as the, as the proposal there, how you got to, you know, looking at sort of, you know, basically a five-story building relative to a townhouse-type development? Just if you could kind of elaborate on all of that.
Well, we sat down, I sat down with the architect and started going through things, also looked at numbers, you know, to build. Again, this is at the beginning stages. And, well, I'll listen to ideas from people from the town and.
Sure. So let me just maybe then share some of my, my feedback and, and I think candidly, some of the concerns that I have about, about this proposal. It is a very dense building for that site. It is not a big site. I recognize that it does have some depth to it beyond sort of the street frontage. But, you know, 18,000 square feet for 24 units is, is a lot, particularly in that neighborhood where, while that is a two-family house, you have a lot of, you know, smaller, single-family homes on relatively constrained lots. And as I think about the lot immediately to the right, which is pretty narrow, you know, you're talking about a massive, massive building right up against the property line that would really be hugely impactful to, to that neighbor. And I think the neighbor on the other side and those across the street as well. It is a tall building for that area. As much as the presentation referred to it as a four-story building, it's really five. Certainly by the elevation and when you think about the decorative work that you have above the top floor. It's a building that leaves no room for green space whatsoever on the property, which is a huge concern of mine. You know, the entire land, maybe except for that small little strip in front of the building, is covered by building or impervious surface and that's a concern I think that we have. You know, appreciate the recognition from the team that there would need to be some stormwater remediation. But I, I think the concern goes beyond that in terms of just the quality of life in that neighborhood and the, the character of that neighborhood. I'm concerned, quite frankly, that, you know, the number of units that are affordable is just the bare minimum of the six of 24 units. For a project that's that impactful on the neighborhood, I quite frankly would have liked to have seen a higher proportion of affordability for a development of that nature. I recognize what the, the state standard is, but again, just thinking about the impact that a project of that size would have on the neighbors in that immediate area, it strikes me that only getting six affordable units in, in our community doesn't, doesn't really hit the need that I think we'd like to see. So I, you know, just in some, I really do hope that if, as your application goes forward, you give some thought to coming up with a proposal that is much less impactful on the neighborhood, that is less dense, that is less tall, and one that does, you know, continue to create some open space in the area. I'm not someone who is reflexively against housing. I think we have a huge affordability problem in this, in this community. But I, I also am concerned about a project that really doesn't meet the needs of the neighborhood and the needs of the community in a way, you know, that, that addresses that affordability issue, in my opinion. So just my feedback and again, I hope, you know, Madam Chair and Mr. Mayo that we can reflect that when we do ultimately comment to Mass Housing. Excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dombrowski?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had opportunity to drive past the site with this in mind and I'll ask WCIT, WCIT, is it possible to pull up in Zoom the street-level view? So the street view as compared with the aerial?
You can maybe share your screen. If you turn your laptop around.
I could try that. I can try it.
Brian, let's see, let's see how good Brian can get in. Sorry.
No worries.
Oh, they got it. They got it. There we go.
Yeah. So if we can see the street view of that, I'll say that I shared the concerns of Counselor Chines in looking at this project. We're talking about less than an acre of property and the building looks awfully reminiscent of 598 North Ave specifically. 600 North Ave, I think, is three stories if I'm not mistaken. 598, I think, is four. It's one story higher. And that's, that's on its own. That's, those two buildings are on their own. And so I'm looking at, at these other homes and we're talking about, it's, they're a floor and a half, basically. And I mean, I can share this if it's helpful to share it this way. What camera should I look into? Brian did the other. But like, this is what we're talking about here. So this is not a, these are not big or tall properties at all. But I do think that they, I think the idea of dropping this five-story, when you think about mechanicals as well, on top, onto this lot, it seems like we're trying to squeeze something onto the, to a property that doesn't really justify that kind of, that kind of size. And if you scan around, I mean, every, there are surely, these homes that are there were at one point all one-family homes. Some of them may have been converted to a two-family. But they're not built as large properties or multi-story properties. I mean, most of them, there's capes here, there's story-and-a-half properties. And this is consistent with most of the character along that stretch especially where it has green space. It has, actually, it's some of the most green space along Nahon you're gonna find. And so this, this notion of taking up virtually all of that, leaving a couple little strips of it and then creating an asphalt jungle here next to a five-story building, I think is incredibly imposing and changes the character of this neighborhood significantly. I too am supportive of smart development where we can add affordable units and add units. But this, you know, balancing that against the residents, the other residences that are there, I really have significant concerns about this. I think there are other opportunities. I think this is not it. I think it's too big. I think it's too tall. I think it takes up too much of this lot and we're trying to shove it into a place where I don't think it belongs. And I think it's gonna really, it's gonna stand out as awfully awkward along this, especially this stretch in the haunt. It's just before the turn and things and I think that's a real issue. I, it's relatively close to a bus line. I don't think the half-mile walk to the commuter rail is all that compelling when you think about what that walk looks like. So I don't think that's, that's convincing. I think places like Foundry Street, to me, I think that's, that's a justifiable transit-oriented development. I don't see this as transit-oriented. I see this as wanting to squeeze the largest property you can on the smallest parcel of land and then trying to justify it as, oh, there are all these benefits that we'll have as a result of that. And I just don't think they're there, especially at a cost of all of these neighbors in the haunt. So I too, like Counselor Chines, would encourage you to think about the impact this is going to have on, on this neighborhood because it's gonna be significant. I don't think it's appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments? Steve, I know, I know when they presented, they kind of did the timeline. Do you mind talking, repeating it kind of, what our obligation is as a town council?
It's, they, it sounds to me like they haven't even completed their application to Mass Housing. So I'd like to see that. We will comment when Mass Housing's letter comes in. I would suggest when we get that letter, we perhaps have another meeting and perhaps invite the petitioner back to discuss it further. Because I, we've seen no letter from Mass Housing and it sounds like either they're applying or it hasn't been looked at yet or I think that one said that they had applied and one said they were still pulling it together. So a little curious on that. But this is the first, the first step.
Yep.
And there's nothing here being approved. Nothing's been filed with the ZBA yet. So we will also look at that and, you know, we will look at our subsidized housing index, which we are working on right now and we've made substantial progress there over the last few years. This community has been really great about having smart development that both, as both Counselor Chines and Counselor Dombrowski talked about, near the transit. You know, we adopted a zoning, inclusionary zoning to promote that and we've had a lot of success there. So I think we need to look at all of those factors. When we get that letter, we'll bring that back.
Great. Okay, so thank you so much for coming. I guess we'll look forward to the application and the letter and then you'll likely be invited back in front of us, but thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Thank you.
Okay, we are not gonna go, we're switching around a little bit because I see we have a mall attendance. We are gonna do item 8C, you. we have a malintendence. We are going to do item 8C, Youth Council. So I'm gonna ask two recent high school graduates and their advisor to join them and introduce themselves.
Hi, everybody. I'm Lauren Boyce. I just graduated from Wakefield High, and I'm the chair of the Wakefield Youth Council.
Hi, I'm Yana Hozog. I also just graduated to, from Wakefield High, and I'm the vice-chair of the Youth Council.
And I'm Catherine Dingra, and I serve as the adult advisor to the Wakefield Youth Council.
All right. So before we get started, I just want to thank Catherine for all of her guidance and hard work throughout our term. It's been an amazing experience and she's worked really hard. And we'd also like to thank Counselor Chines, who's the liaison to the Wakefield Youth Council. He's been to, I think, pretty much every meeting.
Almost every year.
And he just provides great input and great guidance. And I think we'd be in a very different place without him. So we want to thank you for that.
And also Sheri, too.
Yes.
Who's kind of behind the scenes, but she's our technical advisor on rules and policy, policy and procedures.
Yeah, we definitely learned a lot from her as well. All right. So we're gonna start with kind of the description, the expectations, the structure, and the outreach of the Wakefield Youth Council, especially for our new town council members that might not be as familiar. So on the left is the description of the Youth Council. So it provides Wakefield residents ages 13 to 18 with an opportunity to be youth leaders and to kind of learn, learn about and participate in local government, policy, and decision-making. And then on the right is the expectations of youth council members. So how to advocate, be engaged, and participate in voting, and things like that.
Okay. So this is, we're gonna explain the structure of, of the meeting and what a typical meeting looks like. So we usually meet on the first and third Tuesday of every month. Each meeting is usually around an hour long, give or take. The structure of the meeting starts by Lauren calling the meeting to order. Then we have a roll call to see who is in attendance. The typical meeting will have approval of the minutes from the last meeting. We also have updates from the subcommittee working group and liaisons. We also elect a clerk each meeting to collect the minute, the minutes. The clerks will rotate through each meeting, so we pick a new one. Most meetings, we have a guest speaker too. They usually give us a presentation to educate us on a, a specific topic.
Yeah. And typically, and we'll get into this a little bit later, but typically that guest speaker is somebody from a group that a youth council member is a liaison to. All right. So now I'm gonna talk about the member structure, and we'll also get into this later when we suggest the new members. So we started the term with 22 members and we ended with about 20. So for the breakdown, about 14 high school members. We had a split between voting and non-voting positions. And then we had six middle school members who all held voting positions. So as you can see, that's right on the town website. So every member is assigned a liaison position. So they're responsible to kind of stay in touch with them, know what's happening, and then bring updates back to the larger youth council. So we are, are all in the loop about what's happening. And it provides a really great opportunity for youth to have their voices heard where otherwise it, there might not be one.
Okay. So the Communication Outreach Subcommittee is led by Ali Arturi, and it is charge of messaging and communication such as social media, newsletters, and announcements at schools. These meetings are held on the off weeks of youth, of the youth councils. So that is like the second and fourth week of each month. These meetings are open to any youth council members who would like to attend. The, the subcommittee is in charge of the Youth Council Instagram and Facebook, so their social medias. And they follow the town's social media policy, which, when, when posting on social media. Towns, our posts may include when our next meeting is, a summary of the meeting's agenda. We also post important information of different events that are going on, like the Snow Angels that we did, and also voting information. In this process, the Youth Council has learned the importance of the communication and outreach and how it helps us succeed.
All right. So now we're just gonna give a brief overview of the few initiatives that we did during our term. So for our first, and this is probably one of the biggest initiatives that we did, earlier in the term, Nick Walczewski, one of our members, invited Dan McGrath from the Recreation Department to come speak at one of our meetings. Nick is liaison to the Recreation Department. And we learned about kind of the struggle that the Recreation Department, the DPW, is facing with litter and trash. So we decided to form a working group in result of this to host a community cleanup. And we started talking about this right before Veterans Day. So we decided to honor our veterans and give back to our community that we would do it on Veterans Day. So we had about 130 youth participants at three locations. And then we pledged to raise $5 per pound of trash to give to the Wakefield Veterans Service to assist Wakefield veterans to go to the Vietnam-era veterans' role in Washington. So at the end of the day, we ended up collecting 293.5 pounds of trash, and that challenged us to raise $1,467.50 to reach our goal. And this was actually donated by an anonymous donor in Wakefield that had a connection with the Veterans Service, which was really, really nice. So it was, we had a great turnout. It was a great opportunity to give back to our community, and I think it was really rewarding for everybody involved.
So we also did the Snow Angels. This program is an opportunity for senior citizens of Wakefield to get some help after a snowstorm. It was open for all Wakefield teens to sign up and help shovel senior citizens' driveways and stairs. Juliana Spalding is the liaison to the Council of Aging, and she led this program. This program was extremely successful. It was a great opportunity for teen, teens to give back and help the community. It also fostered relationships between the youth and seniors of Wakefield. The Youth Council received lots of positive feedback, and the seniors were, the seniors were very pleased and grateful for this program.
So we also did some voter registration. So this was led by the Communications and Outreach Subcommittee. And we use social media like Facebook and Instagram. We used the Wakefield Item and morning announcements at the high school to put out resources on how to register to vote. Leading up to the election, we also talked about voting at town elections and town meetings and how that all works, and especially the importance of voting as young people. And Yana and I were able to vote together for the first time, which was really cool. And there was a pretty good turnout of young people voting. I know we saw a lot of our friends there. And I came back to hold signs, and I saw a lot of my peers there, which was really, really nice and really inspiring to see that people are still interested in town government and really want their voices heard.
So we did the Galvin Recreation Focus Group. This was led by Lauren, Ali, and I. So, and also in cooperation with Nick Walczewski and Dan McGrath. We went to Galvin after school to talk to the seventh and eighth graders about the Galvin Courts and Fields. We got the idea of doing a focus group after hearing how upset and tired the DPW is after picking up people's trash. The fields and courts were at risk of closing, Mr. McGrath explained to us. We knew something that had to be done, and we needed to take some action fast. So we educated the seventh and eighth graders about this issue and opened the floor to them to come up with some solutions. They came up with more signs, trash cans, and even possibly like an assembly to educate other students. This was a great way for us to gather input from our peers to make positive change in the community. Overall, I would say it was a huge success. We ended up having over 20 students attend this focus group. We were also able to get, set up a prize for one lucky attendee, which was two hours at the America Civic Center, and they could invite their friends or like basically do whatever they want with those two hours.
And we also had pizza for them, which was definitely a highlight.
Always bring pizza.
For sure.
So the takeaways from this past year, we learned a lot of lessons. One is that youth can have a voice in our community. Another is that it is important to create activities to give back to the community and help others. And we value connections made between students and community members. For example, when I was doing the Snow Angels, I met a woman in the community who shared that she is retired as an art teacher. And my goal is to become an art teacher. So I, like, I'd be, and I made a connection with her, and it was just great to see that. Another thing that we took away was to listen to multiple perspectives. It is important when trying to achieve a goal. We listened to many peers' ideas and opinions in the focus group for solving a little problem.
All right. So getting into the appointment and structure recommendations for the 2022 and 2023 term of the Youth Council. So we had a total of 11 applicants. So we read through and did a really brief interview with each one, just under, making sure that they understand the commitment that the Wakefield Youth Council is, and also just to get to know them, to get to know their interests, so we could start to see what, if they wanted a leadership role or what liaison position they might be interested in. So we would like to give these as recommendations for you to appoint as new members of the Wakefield Youth Council. So we had six, just as a breakdown, six new applicants and five returning members. There was one in eighth grade, two in ninth grade, three in 10th grade, four in 11th grade, and one in 12th grade. So as the recommended structure, with such a small pool of applicants this year especially, and years past it has been a little bit bigger, we talked to the Youth Council and they expressed interest in each appointee becoming a voting member, whereas in the past, we have had non-voting members just for organization purposes. But we feel as, where it's such a small group, it would make the most sense for everybody to be a voting member. And then due to the small number of just one middle school applicant, we would like to reopen applications for middle school students or middle school-aged residents in the fall. So seventh and eighth graders. We did that this year, and we were able to get a few more members. So we are hoping to do that as well. So we'd be happy to discuss this in further detail after Yana concludes her presentation.
Okay. So the Youth, the Youth Council's social media, Facebook and Instagram is listed there, the usernames. So please free to, please feel free to follow us if you want to keep up with the Youth Council and see what we are up to next. That concludes our presentation. Thank you for listening. And are there any questions, comments?
Thank you so much. I, I will say, I think hearing about all your successes, you guys are, are one of the hardest-working groups in town. And I will tell you, a counselor from Melrose reached out to me last week. Melrose does not have a Youth Council, and they want to create one. And so they were kind of asking about how we got it done here and, and kind of recommendations. So I'm gonna have to just send this presentation to my fellow counselor over in Melrose. But this was great. Everything you did this year was wonderful. Any discussion from any other counselors? Jonathan?
I, I just want to add, so I, I have had the, the real privilege of, of participating in, in most of the Youth Council's meetings this year. And I, I just, I, I could not be more proud of this group. You know, Lauren and Yana, first of all, your, your leadership as, as chair and vice-chair and as seniors has been outstanding. I, I will tell you the, the way in which you two model sort of respectful dialogue on the Youth Council and the way you open it up to all voices and make sure that everyone has a chance to be heard is really impressive. I mean, I think, you know, a, a lot of adults struggle with that in facilitating meetings. Fortunately, not our current chair. But, but I really, I, I, I could not be just more honored to be kind of associated with Youth Council in this past year and really couldn't be just more proud of every member of the Youth Council for everything that they've done. I, you know, you talked about your accomplishments this year, this year, but I think one of the things that sometimes get hidden is the role of the liaison assignments is actually really important. And even if it doesn't become a slide in the stack, you know, I've talked to, you know, members from other committees who've had contact with their Youth Council liaison or other, you know, folks in town who work in some of the town departments who've really found it incredibly valuable to just, you know, have a, a member of the Youth Council that they can reach out to and talk to and hear from and share ideas with. And again, some of these have become sort of larger projects, which have been absolutely incredible. But just even that, that sort of less formal dialogue that's been had, I think has been really valuable. So thank you to, not only you two, but, you know, all of the other members of the Youth Council. It is such an impressive group. I will tell you, as a town council, this is one of my favorite things to be part of. And again, just couldn't be more proud of, of the job that you guys have done this year.
Thank you. Counselor Smith-Calden?
I echo everything. I just, I think just a couple of years ago, we didn't have this. And yeah, I mean, a, a couple of us were involved in that, and it's, it's, it's great. I just, I more have a question. So I, so the, the middle school, this is the second year in a row where I, is it, do we think it's hard to get them this time of year because a lot of them are transitioning? Well, I mean, the younger kids aren't, but what do you think it is? Is it, is there anything that, that we can do to help or, you know?
Yeah. So I actually totally forgot to mention it, but at one of our past meetings, we had talked about maybe some of the older Youth Council members going into some seventh grade or even sixth grade classes to see if they would be interested in applying for, like, when, if we reopen it in the fall. Because we feel like it's one thing to, you know, see it on Instagram or in the newspaper, but to have a face-to-face conversation about what this is about, what, you know, values we hold. We think that that would be really important.
And, and I've worked hard with Jason Pavy, who's the, the Social Studies Curriculum Coordinator for sixth through 12, to make sure that he's communicating it with all the Social Studies teachers. And right now, they're doing civics projects. So I've, I've even sent follow-up emails, like, oh, I heard about the civics project. We'll, we'll reach out to that if that student be interested in getting involved in the Youth Council to help make that project a reality. So we are communicating. And we're also trying to encourage students that don't necessarily go to Wakefield High, but may go to private schools to apply. So we've had that every year, too, students.
Can I just sort of toss something in on that, too? Just as the parent of a sixth grader, I, I, I think the other thing that's been challenging over the last couple of years has been COVID. Because, you know, particularly for the incoming seventh graders, you know, not all of them are on social media. In fact, a lot of them aren't. Some are. Some of the ways in which I think, you know, you communicate in a COVID world have been a little bit more challenging for some of the younger kids. And so I, I love the idea of kind of, you know, having some of the older members go to the Galvin and, you know, speak to some of the classes and have some of that in-person conversation.
Not to mention, it's probably intimidating to.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I mean, there's a big age range from, you know, again, you know, kind of outgoing sixth graders to, you know, seniors in high school. So it's, I think it's.
I have no doubt you're doing everything, but if there's anything that we can do to help, you know, you have our full support. I think I speak for everyone.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Lauren and Yana, for this. Yana, you forgot to mention you're also an outstanding AP art student, too, on, on display a few weeks back at the Ace Building. So congratulations to you both, also on graduating. Thank you for your service. I think one of the things that's really important in all of this is what you touched on with the Snow Angels specifically, and that's the multigenerational connections that can be made. And I'd love to see that continue to be one of your priorities going forward in how to create better relationships, better ties with especially our older population. I know, Yana, you mentioned the example of, of the art teacher that you had spoken with. And that's so important because it provides a lot of benefit to, you know, our, our older residents, but also it adds a lot of value, you know, to the experience for our, our, our young residents, too. And so I'd really encourage you to be thinking about other ways to do that because you've, you've done really good work in that regard. And, and I think there's a lot of opportunity going forward as well. One thing that, that also stood out is we, and other, other, you may know, or perhaps Madam Chair knows, don't we have, isn't 17 voting members, I recall, it came before us, to increase the number? So are we at 17 currently?
Well, we had, how many did we have?
I think the presentation said 22, but not all voting.
Right, right.
So they had non-voting as well, and then they.
Because we had so many applications last year.
Right.
We had the cap at, but it, the, I mean, you all know, having that many got, you know, it, it got a little difficult. And then with who was voting and non-voting, it, it got a little confusing. Because some of our non-voting members weren't the ones that were showing up the most. So, and they, and they didn't have the ability to vote when it came time to.
Okay. I just, because I know that we had expanded the number of voting members to my recall. And I just think it's important because, you know, you guys are the real deal, like any other committee, you know, and, and any other board or commission that we appoint. And so issues of quorum come up. And that's, that's a part of the experience. Understand, you know, in order to vote, you guys need to make sure you have quorum. So I don't know if, if we're talking about 11 applicants total for 17 voting members, then we already are potentially creating an issue for, for you that where you may not have quorum if a few of those 11 can't make it. So I do think it's probably important to revisit whether 17 is the appropriate number for you. for you and we may have to slide that down a little bit. I don't I don't know, but I do think that part of how to run a meeting, as you know, is making sure you have quorum. I think that's an important skill to you or important aspect of any, you know, group that we have. So I don't know what your thoughts are on that or if that's something we should perhaps address at a later meeting. Or otherwise, I think we should probably repost in order to get 17 voting members because I think otherwise you're setting yourselves up to not have a quorum with only 11 engaged.
Definitely. And I think that that like could absolutely be an issue that we run rerun into later down the road. So maybe instead of, you know, I'd love to bring this back to the Youth Council to see what they think because I want everybody to be involved in this, especially where we're leaving. But maybe it's in addition to opening it back up to middle school applicants, we also do that to high school members. And maybe we do a little bit more outreach to private school students that also live in Wakefield. So I think it would be important for us to bring that back to the Council and then follow up with you on that.
Or we look at bringing the number down to 15 and
That's kind of what I'm thinking. I mean, you know better than what your tendency is.
I think 15 would be good and actually because Lauren and Yana are around right now, I said, let's get into the middle schools now. Because we do, we run an orientation in July that's really fabulous where they get to see each other in person and understand and the older students come back. So I do, I would like those middle schoolers because the middle schoolers that came on in the fall didn't get that experience, so I'd like to, so that was one thing that we discussed today was getting back in there early. So what would that process look like if we wanted to bring it down to 15?
I think we could just bring it, you could make it into an item next meeting or whenever and then we can vote on that.
Yeah, I think if you do some recruiting over the next month and then Catherine, you can come back to us and we can, we'd have to appoint the new members that you got anyway. And then if we wanted to reduce the number, we can just do that at a meeting. But yeah, and this recruitment, just so you know, it's all over boards. We frequently have to reapply, repost for people to apply. So I'm guessing you got a lot of new fans today from the presentation and so students who haven't heard about it will hear about it and apply. So I think that's, you know, maybe we'll repost it. Is that okay too? Yeah?
I think we definitely want to repost. Certainly, I think the fact that we only have one middle school student is something we want to address.
Great. And then you all will kind of do the recruiting. And Catherine, Catherine, thank you so much for all that you do with the Youth Council and all the boards in town. But talking to Jason, Jason is a great suggestion because I know all of us got those emails from the civic students. And I directed them in other ways, but I should have said you should join the Youth Council. So I will probably email all of them because I think that is for all of us to know because I think we all got emails on different issues and recommend that they apply to the Youth Council. So great suggestion there. Any other comments?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Thank you for the excellent presentation. When I looked at the membership for this year, did I see just one senior? Was it just one senior that applied?
So we started out with, oh, sorry, yes, I thought you meant our term. Yes, we only have one senior.
Because obviously the two of you provided outstanding leadership as seniors. And if there's only one senior next year, you're going to be looking at, you know, juniors to step up and provide that leadership to fill that void. Another reason why re-advertising to get more seniors might be important as well.
Absolutely. And I think I completely understand what you're saying, but I also, I think that this council has helped me learn that leadership also doesn't really coincide with age. And Catherine and I were actually talking about this today is that like we could very well have and most definitely welcome a 10th grader to become Chair, but I also think that having those older Wakefield residents on this council is extremely important for leadership and relationship building, for sure.
Thank you.
I think Mave, Raveen and I agree. Age is just a number, right? We're some of the younger folks in this council.
By a couple of months, we've got other people beat on the council. Now, and I, you know, I've been to a couple of your meetings too. I mean, it is just so well-run and respectful and everyone has a voice. And so I think, I think Counselor Vincent makes a good point of, you know, we want this to be across grades and middle school and high school, that was the kind of the vision of it. So I think if we repost it, we'll get some more applications and Catherine can kind of work on a couple of new positions and then come back to us and, you know, later in the summer to let us know. Love to hear how the orientation goes as well. So that was great.
You're more than welcome. Lots of team building.
Yeah.
I was just going to say, one of the questions, I know when two of the members, Ali and Jenna, had presented to the school committee at their last meeting, I, one of the school committee members, I think it was Mr. Fontanella, suggested doing some outreach or communication down into the elementary level. And as I think about kind of building this pipeline of Youth Council members, I want to reinforce, I think that's actually a great idea, just to start to get people to think about the Youth Council as an institution, as something that's there and is something that has kind of a longer-term position in town. I mean, it's hard to recognize the fact that you guys have only been around for two years. But I think that might also be another way to help make sure that we continue to kind of, you know, pique people's interest early so that when they are kind of, you know, moving on from sixth to seventh grade, that, you know, maybe they've been thinking about this for a little while.
Absolutely, yeah. Okay, so we do have a slate of 11 names to approve. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Great, any discussion?
Just a motion to move the slate then.
Correct, to move the slate is, sorry, as recommended by the Chair and Vice Chair of the Youth Council.
Great, and seconded by Julie, all in favor?
Aye, I'm going to say I'm going to refuse myself.
Great. Sherry, did you catch that? Five with one recusal. Okay. Thank you so much. Good luck.
Congratulations on graduation too.
On everything. And thank you for coming, you guys are graduates, so thank you for coming in front of us on a nice Monday, but we'll get you home in time for the game.
Thank you.
Take care, goodnight.
Okay, moving on, let's go, let's go back to item seven E, the flag policy update. And I'm going to turn to Mr. Mullin.
Madam Chair, you'll recall that at the last meeting, we discussed the Supreme Court's very interesting shirt lift decision. And as a result of that decision, the Council asked me to rewrite the town's flag policy. So the use of flagpole policy is now before you dated June 13. Let me briefly explain it. This would apply to all flagpoles under the Town Council's control. That would include those at Town Hall, the Common, the Civic Center, that's Field, and there are others. It would also include the schools because we have a very unusual provision in our charter making school buildings and grounds subject to the jurisdiction of the DPW and therefore under your board rather than the school committee. However, I've provided here that the Town Council would endeavor to confer with the school committee about matters relating to flagpoles on school property. This policy would exclude two kinds of town property, those under the library trustees and those under the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department, because in both cases we have public bodies independent of your board. Most importantly, this policy says right out, "Town flagpoles are not intended as a forum for free expression by the public, rather the decisions of the Town Council concerning which flags to fly and when and from which flagpoles are intended as an expression of official town sentiment." That and other language here is lifted verbatim out of shirt lift, taking the cue from the Supreme Court and using our, the discretion that we are now assured we have. Then there are some rules here about flag use that are fairly standard. We provide here that there will be a US flag at each facility that has any flags, that nothing may fly over it, no flag or banner. And the only flag or banner that may fly under it on a given flagpole is the POW MIA flag. And we must have, by state law, we must have at least one POW MIA flag somewhere in Wakefield. And beyond that, the Town Council would vote on any proposal to allow a flag or banner on any flagpole under its jurisdiction. So I'll be happy to try to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for that, for explaining it and for writing this policy. Any questions or comments? I'm going to go to, do you have your hand up?
I actually just have a clarifying question. So I sat in on the library trustees' conversation when we made the recent decision. If they wanted to adopt something like this, could they simply replicate this?
Oh, sure.
Okay. Or the MLD or, okay.
Great. Counselor Chines?
Thank you. So just a question to make sure I understand. So if I'm reading paragraph three correctly, that would say, you know, our policy is other than the POW flag, we wouldn't fly another flag on a flagpole where the American flag is flying. Is that?
No, no, actually, I understand that in the course of discussion about the flag policy, some veterans groups expressed concern about flying anything under the American flag on a flagpole other than the POW MIA flag. And so when we talk about flying anything else, say the pride flag, it would have to be on a separate flagpole.
Okay, that was actually, sorry, I may have misstated my question. That was what I wanted to wanted to confirm. So just a question on that. So in section five, you know, we talk about the flag or banner not being longer than wider than the flag of the United States that's flown with it, but at least in theory, you wouldn't be flying
Flown with it there, I mean, at the same facility, albeit on a different, on a different, on a different flagpole. And that would apply as well to the POW MIA flag, which would be presumably on the same flagpole as the US flag.
Got it. Okay, so we're defining basically if you had two flagpoles at Town Hall, for example, another flag on the second flagpole would have to be smaller than the US flag on the first flagpole. Okay, got it. Thank you very much.
Counselor Dubarsky?
Thank you, Mr. Mullin, for putting this together. In looking at paragraphs one and three, trying to reconcile them slightly, if we read the first sentence in one, it says, "This policy applies to all flagpoles that are and from time to time may be in use on real property belonging to the town of Wakefield, the town and under the control of the Town Council." Might we add that at the, to the end of that sentence, that an American flag is not being flown on? Because I think that's ultimately the intent, but I think it creates a slight ambiguity by not indicating that at the end, because then when you go to three, there's the question that Counselor Chines had raised. So we would basically end the first sentence by saying that an American flag is not being flown on, so that we establish right from the outset that any pole that an American flag is being flown on would not have another flag aside from the POW MIA flag.
Well, this policy, as you see in number three, applies with respect to those flagpoles under your jurisdiction that are flying the American flag. Because three sets forth the rules about how to fly the American flag, only during the day, if it's at night, you've got to light it, you don't have anything except the POW MIA flag underneath it. And any flag flown at the same facility, albeit on a different pole, has to be smaller than or not bigger than the American flag. So I think that literally the policy goes beyond just those poles that don't have the American flag on them.
I guess that's where I have the disconnect because, for instance, we have one flagpole in front of Town Hall. Theoretically, the American flag could be taken down and another flag could be put up there.
No, actually, under this policy, you have to have the American flag flying at any facility that has a flagpole or more than one. So you wouldn't see a facility under your control that has just one flagpole and a flag or banner other than the American flag.
So where do we see that in this policy? Where's
From at least one flagpole.
Yeah, except during inclement weather. This is number three. "The flag of the United States shall regularly be flown during daylight hours from at least one flagpole at each town facility that has one or more flagpoles."
So you don't see the first sentence perhaps creating an ambiguity there?
I don't think so. I think we pretty clearly here want to address how to fly the American flag, how to fly the POW MIA flag, and how to fly anything else.
Great. Any, Counselor Dubarsky, do you have other questions?
No, so I mean, just, just, just to bottom line it, so people understand, if there's an American flag on a pole, the only flag that we're allowing to be flown in addition to that would be the POW MIA.
On that pole. It would have to be underneath and not bigger than the American flag. The only way you get any other kind of flag or banner at that facility would be if there were a second flagpole.
Right.
As there is, I guess, at the American Civic Center? No, there is not.
There's only one for the America.
The library.
There will be, because we discussed that, right?
It could be, yes.
Yes.
Currently, there's one.
Yes, there will be two.
If the board votes, that's absolutely
Okay, okay, I thought we had previously voted on that, but we will add it to a future agenda. Yes. And Town Hall, yes, 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 we will get second flagpoles in places. Any other questions, comments? Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Mullin, if the Town Council were to adopt a policy like this, we could make the decision to also consider having a town bylaw passed at a subsequent town meeting.
Yes, you could do substantially this or something else by way of a flagpole policy in the form of a bylaw.
And would that bylaw be, I don't know this answer, so I apologize, would that just be a general bylaw or would that be a zoning bylaw?
Oh, no, that would be a general bylaw.
Because one of the things that, when I evaluate the flag policy, I kind of look at it as a two-step process. I see the need to have a flag policy adopted by the Town Council at the earliest stage because of the shirt lift decision, shirt lift decision. But I also see a need perhaps to have a town bylaw for four quick reasons. One, when I look around the country, I would submit that most jurisdictions, the legislative branch, i.e. city council, is the one that passes a flag policy. It's only in New England and parts of New York that we have town meetings. That system of government doesn't exist around the country. Secondly, a bylaw would be much harder to change at a town meeting than having a flag policy adopted by the Town Council being changed in the future. For instance, this flag policy, if we adopted today, at some point in time in the future, four people could decide they want to rescind or significantly change this flag policy if it's only a Town Council-proof policy. If it's a town meeting and it's a bylaw, it's much harder to change that bylaw. Reason number three is, right now, we're in the year 2022 and we are going to appoint perhaps later tonight, a bylaw review committee, so it's an optimal time to have a bylaw review committee look at a potential bylaw for, to bring to the town meeting in the future. And the fourth and most significant reason to me is the, any bylaw has to go before the Attorney General's Office, Municipal Law Division. And they will look at that bylaw to make a determination of whether it comports with the state constitution and state law. To me, that gives an extra protection from liability and challenges that anyone may have if we have a flag policy that is a bylaw. And there's actually some precedent for that because last fall, the town of Dayton actually promulgated a flag policy at town meeting. That was before the shirt lift decision. But the Attorney General's Office on May 27th, after the shirt lift decision, opined on the constitutionality of that flag policy and determined that part of that policy was constitutional and part of that policy was unconstitutional. Now, candidly, that was a very restrictive policy, wholly different in content with what we're looking to do tonight. But the important thing there But the important thing there that I like is that we get that extra approval from the Attorney General's Office that a bylaw that we have dealing with a flag policy meets constitutional muster. And that's why I would look at this as step one and perhaps having a bylaw as step two.
Yep. I don't disagree with any of that. And one further advantage of a bylaw is that it could, at least, and presumably would, be applicable to all town facilities, including those belonging to the schools and the municipal light department. Nonetheless, I think it's important to adopt a policy fast, because we are not going to get to town meeting for half a year. And shirtlift now tells us how to do this right. We have, in the past, maybe kind of arguably, done things that might suggest that some of our flagpoles were considered public fora. I don't think that we have, but there's that argument. Let's kill the argument right now.
Yeah, and that's why I agree that it's a two-step process. This being step one, to adopt this now, and you're right, the bylaw review committee is not going to have a proposed bylaw for the, having sat on it in the past, it's not going to have a proposed bylaw for next November. We're going to be looking long-term. So passing something now is important as step one, and then looking at a bylaw for step two.
Great, thank you. So do I have a motion?
Move to accept the use of my poles on town property policy is presented by Mr. Mullin.
Second. Great. Any discussion? Counselor Dubarsky?
Another piece that I have a concern with is talking about, and I understand it tracks with the shirtlift decision, certainly, Mr. Mullin, but talking about town flagpoles not being intended as a forum for free expression by the public. And I know that we're basically boxed in by that decision relative to that. But there's something that just doesn't feel quite right about stating that this isn't a form of free expression, of public expression. But instead, it says, to Counselor Vincent's point, that in essence, four individuals who happen to be elected onto this body at any given time are voting to express the official town sentiment. And I don't think that that feels comfortable to me. It doesn't feel right that four people, and I'm not, it's no knock on any of the seven of us now, but who knows who's going to be here in the future? And this idea that anyone within town is seeing a flag on a flagpole and believes that the flag should represent them or their interests or their cause or whatever the case is, being met with a policy that says, well, no, the additional flags that we may fly are not intended as a form of free expression of the public, feels like the antithesis of what we would want to be promoting in terms of promoting free expression. And so, I don't know, there's something about this, and I know that the decision talks about the consequences to the elected officials who may vote in a certain way, I get that. But it doesn't change the fact that ultimately, these decisions are not going to be made by public sentiment as much as they will be made by four votes on this body. And that feels a little bit uncomfortable, thinking not just about now, but what we're establishing as the precedent going forward. And, you know, we've talked about the pride or the progress flag and the Juneteenth flag, and those are, I'd just say, rather non-controversial flags. But there's going to be a lot of other flags in the future potentially that folks are going to raise, you know, or come to us on. We don't have a protocol or process in this body to make decisions of what warrants, you know, achieving official town sentiment and what does not. And it just doesn't feel quite right that we're doing that. So I think the other alternative is literally just to have a policy that says that the flags that we fly are the American flag and the POW MIA, and then we rely on the library as the other opportunity to have another flag flown that's not one of those two.
I don't disagree. I think, from the start, I've thought that there are two poles here, and either one would be legitimate. You could decide, consistent with shirtlift, that you are the elected representatives of the people, and you will decide on this matter as you decide other matters, because you're the guys who got elected. You could also say, no, we're not going to go there. There's no reason to get into hair-splitting about what kind of flag to fly. We're just going to say it's the American flag and the POW MIA and leave it at that. It reminds me, actually, of my, some of my municipal law colleagues represent places like Amherst and Cambridge, communities that have their own foreign policy. I mean, they end up going to town meeting and debating resolutions about, well, what are we going to do about Nicaragua? And, you know, maybe they shouldn't do anything about Nicaragua, and maybe you might decide that the town shouldn't get in the business of picking flags. That's a substantive decision for you.
We have a motion on the table that was seconded. I think, so I politely disagree with you, Counselor Dubarsky. I think this is why we were elected, to make these decisions. I think we, the body of seven of us, can decide, and we vote with our decisions, and people can vote us out if they don't agree with what we consider to be an expression of welcoming in our town. So I thank Mr. Mullins for writing up this policy, and I'm going to ask for a vote. All in favor?
Okay, if I could just say, I don't.
I called a vote, let me just, so I called it.
So if you want to shut down discussion, that's fine.
You've spoken three times. So let's take the vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, one.
For the reasons that I've stated, we don't have a policy here amongst this body about how to select what flag we would or would not fly, and I think that's an important piece to this.
Okay, that was five to one. Moving on to.
Madam Chair, may I just ask a point of order? I just don't know. So as far as going forward with, in the future, with the possibility of having the bylaw review committee look at a possible bylaw, what subsequent action does that require? Do I have to raise a motion to do that at some subsequent date, or, I'm not sure of that process for that?
Right, so the bylaw committee is their own committee that we will assign today, and then they will pick a chair, as you know, you are a member of it, and anyone can bring anything to the bylaw committee.
Okay.
Their work does not come from us. They are an independent body. Is that correct? Does that look right?
That's right. I mean, there are basically two ways of getting something on the warrant, getting a bylaw on the warrant. One is, any town body or officer under our charter has the right to propose something, and we're supposed to put it on the warrant. We, meaning, sorry, the town council. The other is, of course, state law and our charter provide for an opportunity for a petition. So if you get 10 petition signatures, you can put something on the annual town meeting warrant. 100, you can do that on a special. And with 200, you can force a special town meeting just to address that.
Madam Chair, I know discussion is closed, but could I have a post-mortem question to?
Go ahead.
Mr. Mullin, if this town council found this current policy that was just adopted to be less than workable, at some point in the future, we're getting peppered with requests and so forth, and we can only imagine, you know, from whom or under what circumstances, we could change the policy at that time, is that not correct?
Oh, yeah, yeah. You can change it at any posted meeting.
I think at this time, then, okay, I'm good with the compromise reached. I think it is a compromise.
Okay, moving on. Item 8A, the bylaw review committee. Do I have a motion?
Yes. Madam Chair, move to appoint the slate of 10 applicants that we received for a term to end upon completion of their recommendations to town meeting.
Second. Great. Any discussion on the bylaw review committee appointments? All in favor? Six zero, Sherry, thank you. Item 8B, recreation commission. Do I have a motion?
Yeah. Madam Chair, I move to appoint Charles Chaconi to the open, unexpired term on the recreation committee.
Second. Great. Any discussion? All in favor?
Actually, did I just point?
Yes.
Just want to point out, you know, one of the things that Mr. Chaconi brings is actually having experience in the recreation department at Melrose, and so it's great to be able to learn from another community. I also do want to thank both him and Carrie LaCess for applying, I think, for the second time, and certainly, as we have other openings, we'll see the applicants again. It was a great applicant pool.
And I think, like we say to all of our appointments when there are extra people, you know, we encourage you, all our meetings are open, you can watch them right now, all on Zoom, like, please participate, and if there's another opening, please apply again, as two of these applicants did apply again when there are openings again. So thank you for that. Any other questions, comments? Okay, so all in favor of appointing Charles Chaconi to recreation commission? Say aye. Unanimous, Sherry. And item 8D, we have a request to advertise for a veteran advisory board member due to a right of information. Do we have to vote on that, or does it?
Normally, the council votes.
We do, okay. So I have a motion?
Yes, so moved.
Second, great. All in favor? Aye, great. Item 11A, a request to accept and expand a gift or gifts to the town of Wakefield in the amount of $77,568.03 from the NRP Group LLC, with things to be used for infrastructure improvement to Foundry Street and Maple Street by the town of Wakefield, as detailed in the estimate.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. And then, any discussion or questions?
Maybe just a question. Was this, if recollection serves, this was part of a requirement?
Actually, this is in addition to the other requirements.
Okay, okay, so this is incremental to?
This is, you know, the, I think the NRP Group felt that, you know, they put in Watermane, and they put a lot of other improvements in that area, and felt that, or maybe they were encouraged that maybe a little bit more was in order, because there was a lot of work on that roadway being shut down and what have you, so this will really help out that area.
Great, okay.
This is an extra.
Got it. So this is beyond, above and beyond the scope of what the ZBA asked for.
Right, exactly. And that's why it's a gift.
Wonderful, thank you.
Just a question, is this on Foundry Street? I'm just curious, what location?
Foundry and Maple.
Foundry and Maple, okay.
Counselor Galvin?
And do we, are these infrastructure improvements going to happen right away, or are they being put in escrow, like I know is happening?
Probably would like to do them when we do the others a little further down, because they're building across the street from 62 Foundry? Is it 62 the ones that are already there? So it'll be done kind of together. We get a better bang for the buck. Maple Street might be done earlier, because nothing's happening there. But I will get you a timeframe on that.
I'm just concerned, because I know we have some sidewalks that happen on whole other areas. Money's been sitting in escrow for a while.
Right, because of money. Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Great, six zero. Item 11B, request to accept and expand a gift or gifts in the amount of $850 to the library from various donors with things.
So moved.
Second. Great. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, great. Item 12, announcements. Counselor Chines?
I'll start with a few. First of all, I just wanted to start, and we had a couple of members of the class of 2022 here, who I think were a great example of just a tremendous group of young people who graduated from Wakefield High School a couple of weeks ago. So congratulations to all of them. You really do make us proud as a community, and it's so exciting to see just all the things that the class will be moving on towards. And I also do want to recognize there are other classes that are moving up. The class of 2026, our eighth graders, will be going to the high school next year, and the class of 2030, which it kind of makes me, it's interesting to say that, since I have a child who is a member of the class of 2030, but also for that class moving on from elementary school to the Galvin. Really wonderful to see that and great to see all of the end-of-eight-year activities that we're having. Speaking of activities, it also was great to be out at the festival by the lake this weekend, and a huge thank you to Wakefield Community Neighborhood Association for hosting that. And also, just want to recognize the town departments that helped with that. Obviously, the DPW does a ton of work to make the space available, but they were also there exhibiting and having some really great giveaways. The health department was there as well, and it's just wonderful to see so many of our town departments kind of getting out there and showing how they serve the public. And then finally, just wanted to mention, since Counselor Dennehy isn't here, there is a second master plan public forum that's coming up on Wednesday, June 29th, so it won't conflict with getting your chairs out before the parade, since we established that will happen in July. But that is a Wednesday night at 10:30. Again, will be virtual. There was a great turnout last time and some great discussion, and certainly encourage anyone who has any interest in development issues in town, any issues in terms of planning issues, to participate in that and make your voice heard.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Counselor Dubarsky?
I just wanted to mention an event that happened yesterday. It was the firefighter's remembrance, and it was a really powerful event to recognize it at Lakeside Cemetery, the firefighters we've lost over the years. The commitment of not just the firefighters, but their families to keeping us safe every day, I think it often goes unnoticed or almost, it's become so commonplace, it's just become expected. But our firefighters have been through a lot, especially during this COVID period. They continue to be there every day for us. They're the first folks on the scene whenever there's a medical issue of any sort, or any other issue for that matter. And it was, there were just some really powerful moments to see, especially the reading of the honor roll of all of those that we've lost over the years. So again, just another reminder of how thankful we all should be for our first responders, and yesterday specifically, our firefighters. Thank you.
I will just add some dates for people to know coming up, actually, yeah, go, and then Steve, I know you have some announcements. So just for people to know, the Juneteenth celebration is Wednesday at 6:00 PM outside of the library. There's also a pride concert Sunday, June 19th, from 1:00 to 3:00, by the lake. Sunday is also Father's Day for all the fathers. Happy Father's Day. And just on Saturday, the farmer's market starts. So June 18th, the season of the farmer's market starts, and just for everyone on the council, the council will be having a table at June 25th Farmer's Market. So stay tuned for more information about there, but you can come and say hi. And then I think Steve had some updates.
Just a couple of things, Madam Chair. I want to thank the Veterans Advisory Board for doing a wonderful Memorial Day Assembly. Paul Cancelieri did a great job running that, and very moving moment, and was the proclamation given to Jay Panett. Jay Panett has been not only an active worker for us in helping veterans, you know, get benefits and what have you through our collaboration with Melrose and Sargus, but he's also been a stalwart member of the Veterans Advisory Board over the years. And talk about the definition of Marine, what a ramrod, straight-standing, I don't know how we stand so straight at all these things, but great gentleman, great family, and I was thrilled to be able to stand up there with he and his family as he got recognized for as many years of service. The other thing I have is that people might be wondering what this trophy was all about, and I thought that Madam Chair would want to talk about it, but I got quite, I got a higher score than you, is that why I get to do it? No.
You brought the team together.
I brought the team, so. We did have a team that played in the Wakefield infield, or the Greater Wakefield Chamber of Commerce, annual bowling.
See a little name change there.
You know, why not? And we did come in third place, so the team was myself, Chair Butt, Bob Vincent, and who else?
Jen Green.
Jen Green, and we also got saddled with Anthony Guardia, and I, we'll talk about Anthony's score later on, when we talk to him. But I think maybe he was helping his other team. But we had a lot of fun. It was a great, great event, and, you know, had they not put the bumpers in the garters, we may have not done so well, but we had a lot of fun. It was really a good time. So we did come in third. Might have been some creative math, I don't know how that happened, but there we go. And my last thing would say that for all of you that were green, go Celtics.
Tom or Sherry, any updates?
Not an update, but a matter not anticipated.
Yes, move on to item 13.
Yeah. This relates back to the 11A item, the $77,000 donation by the NRP Group. One of the improvements which they are donating to the town is, or was originally, to have been a portion of a sidewalk on Foundry Street, because not all of the sidewalk is technically within the town's layout. Bill Renaud, the town engineer, and I both thought it would be appropriate for the town to have an easement over the entirety of the sidewalk. So Brian McGrail is working on a form of grant of easement, which I will review, and when it's in its final
And when it's in its final form, we'll want to get it recorded. In the meantime, though, and just to make sure there aren't any unnecessary delays, I'd really like to get you to vote to accept that easement and to sign this acceptance of grant. Now, it's blank, okay? So I will visit you in jail if you sign it. But I will, I will, I will hold on to it in escrow and I will not part with it until it's a legal document that can be recorded. So if you could give me a vote to approve the acceptance of the sidewalk easement on Foundry Street and have at least four of you sign this, I'd appreciate it.
But before you do that, do you want to say the authority under the vote? Because you did not mention.
Oh, yeah, yeah, this is a little embarrassing, as you know.
That's why I brought it up.
You need town meeting authority to accept any interest in land, and that's what an easement is. And we didn't actually go to town meeting about this, but we do have that ever-so-embarrassing annual article that I call the fig leaf that says, we're going to appropriate $1 for the takings of this, that, and the other things. I mean, blatantly illegal, not something that I would ever rely on for anything I really care about. But we recite, we recite that as authority here, and I doubt anybody will ever check. And I don't think anybody's ever going to look at this tape, so.
Not sure how I feel about making this motion.
I just had you make it, but.
The blatantly illegal with five other attorneys sitting here.
I think that's an overreach personally.
So is there a motion, Jonathan?
Well, as one of the two non-attorneys present in the room right now, who doesn't need to worry about being disbarred, I will make a motion to sign the acceptance of grant of easement for the sidewalk on Foundry Street as recommended by Mr. Mullin.
And I'll second it, is it second now? That worked out perfectly. Any other questions, discussion? All in favor? Great, thank you, we will get signatures on that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other matters not anticipated for agenda?
I just, maybe on a future agenda, Steve, if you could just give us some update on the repainting of crosswalks in town?
Yes.
Just feel like?
Yep.
Feel like an update on that would be really helpful.
Great, okay, we will add that to our future agenda. Item 14, adjournment. Our next regular town council meeting will be Monday, June 27th at 7:00 PM. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, great, all in favor, say aye. Aye, great, thank you, thank you, everyone. Go Celtics.